Twenty seventeen at seven oh one PM. First item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Burks?
Present.
Commissioner Rainey?
Present.
Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Present.
Mayor Carroll?
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. If you'll please stand. And please bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for everything you've given us. Our hearts are heavy during this time with everything that's going on in our country, and we just lift those up to you, those that have lost their life, all the anger and the hatred, and we just ask for peace and love. We just ask that you be with us tonight as we go forth in our own city, doing our own business. Guide us and direct us in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third item is approval of the agenda, and so let me ask, is there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Got a first and second. No other discussion?
Mayor, may I request two items on the agenda, twelve F and twelve G. If it would be the privilege of the council, I would like to consider removing those, and I'll explain just briefly. Twelve F, in looking at where we are, we'd like to move that until the amended budget likely in January. It just makes more sense. We kind of like to be a little cautious, or I would, as to where we are financial planning. I think it makes sense to do that at that time. Again, if it's pleasure of the council, I can explain further if necessary, but it's really just that simple. And secondly, item twelve G, there's no action required by the board on that tonight. That's an item that was voted on at the last meeting. The discussion would not, would have been simply to prepare the resolution, but the resolution was effectively prepared at the vote. So we'll just simply prepare the resolution and have it signed. There's no action to be taken on that. So the request will be delete twelve F, twelve G.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I'm sorry, I already forgot about the roll call.
That's okay. And thank you for those.
Okay, item four, public hearing, and we don't have one tonight. Item five, citizens' comments. Do we have any tonight? If you would please come up and state your name and address.
Brooks, seven three one five Chester Road. I'm always coming up here complaining. I thought I would take this opportunity to come up here tonight and say thanks to all the city staff that took care of the changing of the school zone traffic. From all that I've heard, it was a huge success. Thank you.
Item six, awards and recognition. Do we have any from staff tonight? Okay. Any of the commissioners have anything they would like to recognize? Item seven, public announcements. Any announcements tonight? I think we have a big ballgame Friday, Battle of Eight Forty. I'm assuming it's probably seven o'clock, if somebody wants to correct that. So get a big crowd out, maybe supporting the first, I guess, game. And this, like I said, is always a big deal for the community and the kids. Anyway, if you can make it, please join them at the football field on Friday night at Any other announcements? Okay. Then we'll move on to staff comments. Ms., do you have any?
No, ma'am. We have a couple of items for discussion, but no staff comments. Mr. Paisley's out on vacation this week. Chief Hughes in the Fire Department is in training in Franklin this weekend, cannot be here for tonight, so there, that's where they are. But they didn't have anything to present to you tonight. There's some part discussion, but we'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Johnson?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Castan? Okay. Chief?
We're good.
Mr. Darty. So it's always so easy now. We'll just move right through. Item nine, approval of the minutes, which is included in the consent agenda. So we'll move to item ten. If I can get a motion, I'm approving the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? Changes? Okay. Ms. Johnson, if you would like to do a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Everybody is in favor, we'll move on. Item eleven, old business, second and final reading, an ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-one.
An ordinance to modify the hours of public park use by making it unlawful to occupy the park by any person or persons after designated hours, with the exception of city sanctioned events. Individuals found in violation of this rule shall be subject to prosecution. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Johnson, if you would like to do a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye. Okay, five in favor, and we'll move on to new business. Twelve, off premises beer permit for Fred Store of Tennessee Incorporated located on twenty-four thirteen Fairview Boulevard, Fairview, Tennessee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? And Ms. Johnson, is everything in order?
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor.
New business B, appoint open seats, Board of Zoning Appeal. Citizen seat expiring six dash thirty, twenty eighteen, and we had one applicant, and that's Mr. John Blade, and he's here in the audience.
Move to appoint John Blade to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, that will be two. Industrial Development Board, citizen seat expiring six thirty, twenty twenty. Do we have applicants for that?
No, ma'am, we didn't.
Okay, so we'll just leave that on the agenda until we receive application. That will bring us to twelve C, request to waiver compliance with condition specified in the Evergreen Industrial Park conveys and restrictions for lot twenty-one on behalf of Janay Ficken.
Mayor, I move to waive compliance with the conditions specified in the Evergreen Industrial Park covenants and restrictions for lot twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Only thing I think I have is, where is the, is this, where's the pond in relation of the veterans' parks?
It's further east, closer to the city limits, or city center, I should say.
So this is like the second entrance, or?
This is technically the main entrance.
Okay.
This would be a lot between Lob Lolly and the asphalt plant?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Ms. Johnson, if you'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
All in favor. Motion carries.
Okay, that would be new business twelve D, first reading of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash eighteen.
An ordinance to amend the PUD previously approved with ordinance number nine forty-eight with the addition of tax map twenty-two parcel fifteen point oh-two consisting of one point one acres located at seventy-seven sixteen Horn Tavern Road and tax map two parcel fifteen point oh-one consisting of one point four acres located at seventy-seven twelve Horn Tavern Road from a RS forty low-density residential zoning district to a RS fifteen PUD planned unit development zoning district. Move to approve.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussion?
Thank you. This is a matter that was previously before the board. This rezoning request was originally filed the day after the moratorium went into effect. And when it came before the board, based upon the moratorium, we were unable to really consider this item. This has been back before the Planning Commission, before it came before us the second time, and it did receive a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. In essence, we're adding two acres of land to an already approved RS fifteen PUD. One acre. Could we have the previous appro, oh, okay, thank you. As we can see, we've got an island here. We've got an unzoned island where a landowner is completely surrounded by a PUD in the middle and then right beside it as well. Now, if we can switch back to the proposed, what this allows to be a little bit more uniform development instead of having that little bitty island in the middle that would be difficult to sell if the homeowner decided to. I'm not sure who would want to buy a piece of property surrounded in the manner it is if we don't change the approval. I think it was an unintended consequence by the moratorium we passed, and I think it's a better laid-out project with the additional land added in.
Mayor, is there anyone here to speak for the project? Is there anyone here? So if I'm not mistaken, there was a clause in the moratorium that we could have addressed this previously. Is that not correct? Isn't that what we discovered the last meeting? That if something had been approved previously, that it could have come back? Do we have a copy of the moratorium?
I shouldn't say we have a copy of the moratorium, but I think, Commissioner, that what you're referring to is a recollection is that we amended the moratorium to allow PUDs that had been approved prior to the moratorium to be modified.
Okay.
So that was done at a previous meeting.
Mr. Mangram, real quick, are you, are there going to be shrubbery? I don't have, I don't recall, in that middle section, or, I mean, trees? Are they going to line those homes that are back to back?
This entire development is almost a completely tree. There are not a lot of big mature trees there, but it hasn't been logged in over twenty years and full of trees. And our intent is to leave all the trees that we possibly can that will still survive with the construction that we intend on doing with infrastructure and the homes. We're going to leave all trees that we can leave.
I just couldn't remember when it came in front of the Planning Commission what the intent was, because it seems like a lot of homes right there back to back.
Those lots, if I'm not mistaken, one through six and then twenty through twenty-five, that's the area you're talking about? Those lots, if I recall, and you might be able to enlarge that, but I think those lots are about a hundred and fifty feet deep, and we intend on keeping those houses up closer to the road. So that'd be quite a bit of distance between back door to back door.
And this has taps, just to remind me?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, how many homes total?
The amended plat shows fifty-five.
And how many acres?
Total, I know it's just slightly below the two point nine that the R fifteen PUD allows, but I don't remember the exact total acreage. I think we were twenty-one in the previous development, and these combined, these two tracts is another little over two additional acres.
And how much, so you're able to use all of it? There's no?
There is some, there is some common ground. As you can see, we're putting a recreational area there that's going to have a, like a picnic pavilion with parking dedicated for that pavilion. There is a perimeter buffer on the lots on the eastern side.
Can we make it, can we make it bigger again? Oh, that's good, huh?
And then there's, like, see between lots six and seven and eight and twenty, there is a strip there that's left as well that'll be common for, like, people that live on the eastern side if they want to access the picnic pavilion. Instead of having to drive around, if they don't want to, they can walk through there. And of course, there are sidewalks in the development as well if they prefer to do it And there's also at the bottom of fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three, and fifty-four, there is a detention pond there, but that a whole triangular-shaped piece of property is common ground, and we're going to leave that as natural as we can leave it for buffers for the adjoining property as well.
And how big is that space?
That space is over an acre. I don't recall exactly. I do not have the plat with me, unfortunately. If you can scan to the left, the other leg, go to the left, there you go. Scroll up, it shows, there's twenty-four point three six acres total, three point something acres of open space is what that development summary is showing. As you can see there, I proposed fifty-five units. It's only, it's two point two six units per acre, and R fifteen PUD would allow up to two point nine, which would be seventy units. We're proposing fifty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Ms. Johnson will go to a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
All in favor. Motion carries.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, new business twelve E, broadcast BOC meeting on Facebook Live. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, until our administrative meetings, I had been speaking about this option, and we talked about this a little bit with the new system that we had. I don't know if this necessarily has to go for the board for a vote or not. I just think that this would be a great addition to what we're already doing. It would allow us in those times when Comcast acts up and we don't get video, or if Sissy decides to take a vacation and there's nobody here to upload that video to YouTube or whatever, Facebook Lives would allow us to have the meetings basically online instantly, so they would be live for people to watch. As well, as soon as it's over, it's automatically uploaded there. It would also allow for some citizens to comment live, maybe that couldn't be here. I know I've missed one of these meetings, and I was able to kind of go back and watch that way, but I wanted to see that meeting live. So thanks to FaceTime, I watched the meeting live that way, but it would have been a whole lot easier if there would have been, if that would have been an option. So if we want to discuss that, again, I don't know that this is something that needs a vote, per se. We're already broadcasting live. This is just another way to do that, but I'm willing to hear any comments, concerns, questions about moving in that direction.
Commissioner Burks?
My only question really is, what, is our current equipment able to do this, or do we need someone to come and do it separately? My understanding is it is capable to do that. Do we know how to do it? Sure. Just because you can, doesn't mean we know how. So that's my question. Worst case scenario, and this is what I had said in the last administrative staff meeting that we had, we can put an iPad, iPhone, anything back there in the back, and it allows for that capability. So we have the capability. It would be much better to tap into what we're already doing, so the broadcast is a little bit better, the audio is definitely better. It should be as simple as plugging the cable into our board back there, but I believe Sissy was going to be reaching out to them to make sure, I think we understand that it can do that, but can they show us how to do that?
Commissioner Burks, I can answer that question. We can do it. We have to do some reconfiguring of the system, which is not a big deal. We've already reached out to the equipment and software provider. They can do that. They're going to come in and take care of that for us for minimal cost. And what we will have to do is work out a way so we know we're fully staffed back there. As we mentioned, that room's going to be busy. So as we do that, but as far as system-wise, we can configure it to make it work.
And correct me if I'm wrong, would that, I don't know if this is city attorney or city manager, would this be something that this board would need to vote on?
I don't believe so, unless we're going to need some special equipment or administrative procedure to get it done. I'm not really sure how to do that. You can probably call my seventeen-year-old son. He could probably tell us how to do it. But no, it's, these are public meetings, and I'm not, I don't believe you would need a vote in order to broadcast live on Facebook. It's not going to cost anything, and you don't need any special procedure in order to do it.
I do kind of like the idea of it, but I also worry about how professional it is. I know that a lot of businesses use social media as a opportunity to get word out, but I just, I'm not so sure it necessarily gives the most professional image. And I may be wrong, people may disagree. I do think it's a, it's a neat tool to see people watch, to get that instant reaction, but I don't want to turn into a reality TV show or some kind of, you know, we're interested in our hearts and comments. That's my only fear.
Would, would we be able to see the comments? I mean, I'm assuming we're not going to be watching Facebook while we're up here, so would those comments, if there were live comments, would they even be relayed to us?
One of the, if I could, one of the things that I had mentioned would be, at some point down the road, we could easily have someone, I even had thrown out the idea of having an intern from the high school that's in the audiovisual club or whatever, be here for some of those meetings, and they could write down some of those comments and then sneak them to Brandy, and she could kind of go through them and even ask us, and we could answer those live here, maybe at the end of the meeting or whatever. But even if, when we get done with a meeting, if it's a decent hour, you know, some of us may go home and check it out and see what some people wrote, and we'd be able to kind of get back with them that way. I mean, right now, we can do that on YouTube, so it's no different. It's just that instead of it being on YouTube, it's on Facebook, and it's live. With YouTube, we have to record the meeting, hopefully it records, then we have to upload it, which takes a pretty good amount of time on Friday. If there's cord in here, there's a delay in that. This would actually eliminate a couple of steps. We could turn the, I'm sure we could turn the comments off if that's an issue, but I just think it's a, it's a little bit easier process to get those meetings on.
If we can't, if we can't see the hearts and the smiley faces and the angry faces flowing across the board up there, I don't want to do it.
Actually, no, we could do that. That's the thing about it. If we had the right equipment, we could sit there and, you know, play for the audience and, you know, make it a great show.
No, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, and we do have some, we do have some issues often with, with Channel nineteen or whatever it goes out on now. I guess it's still Channel nineteen. The way I understand Facebook Live, and I know very little about it, except when I look at my Facebook in the morning, I see somebody putting their makeup on live right there in front of me. I guess they're trying to sell something, but I guess you have to have an account, like, I guess it would be the City of Fairview Facebook page, and unless you were a friend of the City of Fairview and it showed up in your feed, then you wouldn't be able to access it anyway. Is that how that works? Does anybody know?
I believe you can actually set that so that if they're not, they don't like our page or follow our page, they would be able to see it but not necessarily comment on it.
If you can set it up where it's public. You can set it up where it's public and there's no...
Correct, you can set it up so that, well, two ways, you could set it up so that the video is public and anybody can see it, but not anybody can comment. Or exactly the other way, anybody can see it and anybody can comment. And I don't know how the Facebook pages, our Facebook page is set up now, I have no idea.
I, I think it would be good if, if we could do that and then maybe do those comments, just like we do the first five people that sign up. That if we chose to acknowledge any of those, have a definite plan of how we're going to address it, how many we're going to address, if we ever did that. And I think maybe for a while, it would be good not to have the live comments maybe available. I think most people, if they want to comment, they know how to get in touch with us.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, it's good to know.
Mayor, one thing I'll say, any avenue we can take to enable more of our citizens to see what goes on in the city government is a good thing. I know a lot of people have Facebook, it's obviously fairly popular. And there's probably more people that can use Facebook than go out and use YouTube. It just seems to be a bit of an easier platform to use for a lot of people. So from that point of view, I think it's, it's helpful to empower our citizens to know what's going on in the city and that's always a good thing.
Okay, well, if there's not a vote, I mean, you can, I guess, give your consensus if you feel like you've got that. I'm not accustomed to us doing a decision like this without a vote, but just because anytime, even when we went to YouTube or aired them live. But if the city attorney and city manager does not think that's necessary, then we can move forward and leave it at the will of you.
Well, Mayor, it's not necessary, but to the extent that, and my only concern is that we, we don't have a clear understanding about what we're going to do. If we, you know, that you might vote, if you might vote in order to have a clear understanding about what the plan is, no votes required, but that would be helpful if we knew exactly, I mean, we've had a lot of discussion here, I'm still not clear about what we're doing, but.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll easily, I can, I'll come up with a plan if you want and I will defer this, we've already talked about it, but we can bring it up again at the next meeting, have a better idea and then, and then vote on it. I don't have a problem with voting on it. I'd rather vote on it, to be honest, probably. So we can do that, come up with a plan and then vote on it next meeting.
Okay. Then that will bring us down to 12H, skipping F and G because they were removed. And that is allowed distance between PUDs, Commissioner Burks.
In the past, we had a ordinance that determined the minimum distance you could have between planned urban developments. And at some, and off the top of my head, I don't even remember what that distance was, but at some point that was repealed. And the reason I wanted to bring this up for discussion is, it's probably something we need to look at, because part of our issue with density is we seem to be putting PUDs on top of each other currently. And if we're spreading those out, it might help with traffic issues and some of those things. Now, I know we have a comprehensive plan, we're in the process of implementing the beginning of that plan and that will probably take care of a lot of these issues. But until then, this is something that I thought it would be worth discussing, to see if there's some step we want to take. And then really, it's not just PUDs, it's any large development, but currently, the only large developments we're doing really are going to be PUDs because of the sewer issue. If the sewer issue gets fixed, obviously, an R20, just a straight R20 can be as many houses as they want based upon the land density. So that's just something I wanted to bring before the board and see if that's something anyone had any thoughts or ideas on. And I did ask the city planner to see if she could determine what some of the, the general distances were, I don't know if she's been able to get to that yet. What other thing I would like to see is a, if we could get a map for the planning commission members as well as the board of commissioner members showing where all the current developments are, as well as all the proposed developments and the developments that have been approved but not started and the number of homes in each of those developments, so that we do have a better idea when something comes before us. Because I drive down the road and I say, okay, well, there's no developments here. Well, there may have been one that was approved five years ago that just hasn't started, it didn't start any day, because if it's a non-PUD, it doesn't expire. So when we're going forward on either the planning commission or the board of commissioners, we need that information and I think it would be helpful to have something along those lines.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you Mayor, a couple of things, one, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, just about the topography in Fairview and the, how we're laid out from a geographical standpoint. I mean, obviously, there's a finite amount of space and unfortunately, in Fairview, there's, not all of that space is buildable space. So you see some of these developments pop up next to each other, next to each other rather, because that's really the only buildable space that there is. So I hate to, to establish a hard and fast rule that says, under no circumstance are we going to allow, you know, two PUDs next to each other. With that said, I think we could obviously put some restrictions on if we're going to have PUDs next to each other, what we're going to require of the adjacent PUD. In other words, I know now you can have a certain number of lots before you have to do a traffic study. So hypothetically, you could have three or four PUDs or developments next to each other, none of which, based on the, or the number of lots, would have to do a traffic study. Well, I think we need to look at if those, if you have one PUD and then you have another one come in, another one come in, we need to look at making it, we're going to require a traffic study just based off of the collective number of lots based on all of those developments. So certainly, I think we can look at doing some restrictions, but me personally, for all the reasons I talked about, I hate to just create this hard and fast rule that says, no, under no circumstance, we're going to do that. I mean, I think we're going to have to look at, you know, sort of take it on a, I hate to say, take it on a case by case basis, because that does, there's some, I guess, you could be, could be said that you're doing things arbitrarily and, and you're not following a rule. But I, I would like to have a rulebook and everybody follow the rulebook. But again, I think there's some, I think there are some, some challenges here in terms of development, so just my, that's, those are my thoughts.
I'm not so sure that, that the distance was, I thought that was still in play, that there was a distance between subdivisions. I'd like to see where that was taken out, because I just don't recall it, not to say we didn't, I just can't recall. I remember we had this conversation before, but it doesn't matter if it's in our codes or not. What you're referring to is basically, we, the board, when it comes to PUDs, can give variances. And that's probably some of what you're referring to in the past. But I do agree with the Vice Mayor, I think the more we, I think this moratorium on the PUD is a great example of how we handcuff ourself. And instead, we don't allow ourself to use our own knowledge and good judgment. And so I think sometimes, and a lot of this can be, you know, decided during the comprehensive plan too, but, you know, I think sometimes we can overregulate. And like the Vice Mayor said, just our topography of our community, we've found over the years, there are certain properties that are developable compared to other ones that are not. So that would be my only thought.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
I, I really think that our moratorium was, I thought we did something that we should have done. Until we get a comprehensive plan and we know what we're doing, to me, it was a wise decision to do that, until we can give ourselves time to get a plan. I like Commissioner Burks' idea, I mean, what was the original distance before it was repealed? Does anyone remember?
It was a mile.
So that's not that far, really. So why was it, do we know why it was repealed? What the thought was behind that?
I don't recall it being repealed unless it was something in that design review when they were, that codes. And I, I have a tendency to remember those details, but I, you know, I'm not real sure. Go ahead, Commissioner Burks.
And let me just say, I'm not necessarily for or against this idea, I just thought it was something that we should probably bring up and discuss. Because our topography does limit where you can and can't build, at least affordably. You can build anywhere you want, it's just a matter of how much it's going to cost to do it. But it's something we need to think about, because again, if we're putting everything in one spot, back to back to back to back, it is going to create more of a problem. And again, it's, our comprehensive plan and I assume part of that would be a modification of our land use map, will fix some of those issues, if not most of them. But again, it's just something that we need to look at and part of this, I also wanted to talk about having a map provided so that we know where everything is. So we know what the density in a certain area is. And not just what's there now, but what has the potential of being built because it's already been approved. And I think that's just a really good tool that we all need to be able to make these decisions. Because again, a subdivision that was approved seven or eight years ago that no one's really thinking about, could all of a sudden come into effect and what we thought wasn't going to be an issue now is. So I, I would like to see that.
And the other thing, I mean, a mile doesn't seem like that far, but what you're doing is, is if you take a PUD and you put it here, then a mile's roughly, what, 5,600 feet, I think? So you're taking, you know, 5,600 feet in all directions, you know, around there. So you're really looking at a radius of two miles, I guess, am I saying that right? I think, anyway, a mile in either direction, so I mean, that's, that's really a lot of space when you think about it. And, and within that area, you know, we're putting a restriction on what Joe property owner can potentially do with his property.
Well, I think we already have restrictions on what Joe property owner can do with his property, to a certain extent.
To a certain extent, but we're even further, you know, restricting that. I mean, and I, you know, I, I know it's our role to make sure that we're doing things within the current zoning and based on the land use map. But, and I agree, we do need a comprehensive plan, I absolutely agree with that. But, you know, it's sort of a fine line, in my opinion, that we walk and, and making sure that we're doing what's required based on the city land use map, the city zoning ordinance versus on the other side of that, what Joe property owner can do. And, and you know, I, I take that very seriously.
Well, I take it very seriously too, but what also concerns me is that we don't even seem to know what our current ordinances are. I mean, we seem to think there is still that rule, our city planner says, no, there's not that rule. So we're not even really sure right now what ordinances we have in place. So until we kind of get to the point that we know what rules and regs we already have, then it doesn't make much sense to me that we're trying to make other rules and regs when, for all we know, they're already there. That's my concern.
Well, I think that's a valid point, but the thing about it is, is our responsibility to know our rules and regulation, there's a code book that we can read. So if we're coming up here, not doing it, which it can happen as we go through, but, you know, a lot of this is going through the planning commission and the planning commission has a responsibility to know our own regulations. And so it's not like we're blindly. Now, unfortunately, every once in a while, there's going to be a hiccup where we are going to have to ask and have to have staff to, you know, follow up, because we can't remember them all. But, because there is a lot of regulations in our building codes. So, but that's why we have staff and engineers come into the meeting. So to say that we're unsure, I don't know is a totally correct statement.
I'm sorry, I thought that you did not remember it being repealed and our city planner says it has been, so I guess that's why I thought we didn't know.
Commissioner, I do agree with that statement right there, we did, but to say a blanket with all is, you know, really giving a bad impression of the city. And, you know, I probably do know, you may not know them all, but I have a good amount of knowledge because I have been on the planning commission, I've been reading the regs. And so they're available for all of us to do that. So there is one in question, you're right, and, you know, if the staff can get that to us, that would be wonderful.
Yes, Commissioner.
I will say, the project that Mr. Owens, our city engineer's working on, i- is helping that process, taking some things out that have been repealed but were never taken out of the actual rulebook and I think putting things back, putting things in that have been approved that were never put in. So we're cleaning that process up and Mr. Collins, you know what the status is on that project by chance?
Yes, I spoke to Will Tuesday, that is, that project is complete, he's going to be delivering those documents to us. I'll get a copy of them and each member of the planning commission will get a copy of them as well. So he asked, as a matter of fact, he's out of town yesterday and today, it was Tuesday when I spoke with him, he's out of town yesterday and today, I'll speak with him again tomorrow and we'll get those delivered.
Commissioner Burks, I would agree with you to the fact of, and I think it's needed, there is land use map, I mean, it's available in our conference room, you can look at it. But it doesn't tell you, as things have been approved, what has been approved. And I think that's an excellent idea, if we could come up with that and at least know what started development, what's been, you know, done or already approved and own a land use map, I think that would really help, especially as we have such a new planning commission. I think that would be helpful for all of us, so just as we grow and, you know, now PUDs, they have to build within three years, so we would have to, you know, keep up with it. But having that working document is an excellent ideal.
Can we add the date? If there's a PUD that's been approved, could we add the date to the map that we have?
I think it's a good idea to know when, if there's a PUD that hasn't started, when does it, you know?
When was it approved?
Thank you.
That you were...
And when does it expire? That's what I was trying to come up with. That'll give us some ideas, it's just, I think it's good general knowledge that we need for a planning process. I think it'd be important to have as part of the comprehensive plan as well, so. And again, like I said, the allowed distances, my understanding is it was removed some years ago, I'm not even sure how long. Because I thought that was in place as well and I went to looking and apparently I was told it was not. So hopefully, with the documents Mr. Owens provides, we'll have a hundred percent answer on that. Anyway, that's really all I had tonight, just some thoughts on that. Again, not necessarily wanting a hard distance to go in there, but I thought it was just something we needed to talk about, because that seems to be part of the problem, is just stacking these developments. And I know I'm saying PUDs, no reason I'm using PUDs right now is because that's really the only large developments we can do. So that's all I have on this matter.
Okay. Okay, that will bring us to I, Resolution 14-D...
Okay, that will bring us to I, Resolution fourteen dash seventeen.
A resolution approving an employment contract for a city manager.
Mayor, I emailed previously to every commissioner and to the mayor, to city manager, Mr. Collins, and to the city recorder, a draft proposed contract. And Mr. Lucas had presented us one at the last meeting. Commissioner Crutcher had made some reasonable recommendations that there be some provision put into the contract to, for the city of Fairview in case the city manager voluntarily terminated his contract. So I added some language along those lines. I'm certainly open to any suggestions you have. I didn't have any, there was no suggested amount or manner, so I sort of came up with something. I know that Mr. Collins, I have not spoken to Mr. Collins about the content of the contract, but I know he may have had his own attorney to look at it. So if you've got any questions for me about the draft, I'll be happy to try and answer those questions. Try to make it as simplistic as I could. It's my understanding from, I think that, from reading the draft and much of the language I kept that you presented this. But I think the general intent from what was presented at the last meeting was, the general themes were a three-year contract, no removal unless it's for cause during those three years. For cause is statutorily defined, really, and that would be criminal violation, misfeasance, malfeasance, or neglect of duty. So I left that in there and then put in some language about voluntary termination because certainly you can't force someone to work. So if they left, what would be the recourse for the town? So that's, that's the language I put in there and tried to make it as simple as possible. I'm open to any suggestions.
Yes, go ahead.
A couple of things. First, I'd like to, maybe some explanation on, and you're right, it is, it is a pretty, even for me, I can understand it. So that's, that's good, that's saying something. But where do we come up with, help me understand the twenty-five thousand?
Again, there's no rhyme or reason to that. I picked what I thought was, I did not discuss that with anyone in advance of doing it. I picked an amount that I thought would, would be somewhat of a deterrent to voluntary termination. It's not a nominal amount, but it wouldn't be equivalent to someone's annual salary. So it's arbitrary. That's the, that's the amount.
For me, I just, I understand the reasoning behind it. I just, for me, I feel like that's definitely too much, personally. You know, I'm thinking, trying to figure out that, you know, repayment for compensation benefits and other, but, correct me if I'm wrong, and I wasn't here when, when city manager was hired, but was there any kind of a signing bonus? Did we pay moving expenses or any of that? So is the city going to be out any of those expenses if all of a sudden Mr. Collins decides to leave? I don't know that there's any expenses that we would be out on that side of it. Would it be a major inconvenience? Exactly. Another thing would be, if he gets to two and a half years, I would think that maybe some kind of a prorated amount would, would take effect, I'm not really sure. For me, like I say, twenty-five thousand is, that's a lot of money, in my opinion. I would probably be more comfortable with it if it was something to the effect of city managers required to give us a sixty-day, ninety-day notice of resignation. If that doesn't happen, then, let's say it's a sixty-day notice, fifteen thousand dollars, which would cover basically that salary for that amount of time. But I just, I just personally think twenty-five thousand is a bit much. I understand covering the city side of it, just think that's, that's a bit much.
Mayor. Would it, would it be logical to say twenty-five thousand dollars, for instance, but every month take two thousand dollars off of that? And after two years, there would be no penalty?
It's a reasonable request. I mean, what you're saying is that if there's a short duration of time left on the contract, then the amount should be less. I understand that, that idea.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts. One, this is, what I'm about to say has no, is no reflection on Mr. Collins or Mr. Collins' performance whatsoever, because we couldn't have picked a better city manager, and Mr. Collins has done an excellent job. But every time we do one of these, these contracts, it sort of sets a precedent for what may be expected in the future. And, you know, I hope Mr. Collins is here as, certainly as long as I am, and hopefully beyond. But, you know, my thought and the reason I asked for this to be put in here was, is because in past, in the past, these, these contracts tended to be one-sided, and there was absolutely no, you know, we couldn't get rid of someone except with, for with cause, you had to have cause, but yet they could walk. And there was absolutely no penalty for doing that whatsoever. And although the city may not have paid moving expenses or those types of things, in this particular situation, there are costs associated with having to hire another city manager. I mean, there was the cost of having a meet and greet where we invited the top, I guess it was the top three candidates here to the city for, City Hall for dinner. There was a full day of interviews that involved the Board of Commissioners and the, some of the city staff. You know, there's cost associated with that process. There were costs associated with advertising for the position. So there, there's certainly some costs there. And, you know, to me, personally, I think twenty-five thousand dollars is about right. I think that's, that's a pretty good number. If we arbitrarily pluck that, I think that's a good number. It gives, it gives the city manager some incentive to, to stay for the duration of his contract. And again, hopefully beyond. Hopefully, we can be having a negotiation three years from now, two years from now, whatever we, we agree on. But, you know, I used the football analogy last time we talked about this, and same thing, we have a really good city manager, and I'm sure there's people going to come knocking. They're going to hear, hey, that guy in Fairview, he's doing a really good job. We really need to get, we need to get him away from Fairview. We can pay him, you know, three times what Fairview pays him, or whatever. So at that point, twenty-five thousand dollars may not be too big of a deal for somebody to pay. It wouldn't be, right? So, so, so I just don't think that's a big number. And I'm not, I don't, I mean, I understand that's a lot of money. I don't mean to sound like that it's not. That is, that is a whole lot of money. But I want it there, not because I want Mr. Collins or anybody else ever have to pay it, I want it there because I want Mr. Collins to stay here. And I think that's at least some incentive to do that. Maybe we need to raise it based off what we just said, maybe we need to make it fifty thousand. But those are my thoughts on it. I mean, that's really the only thing I have. You know, I had said early on, not long after I got elected, that I, I didn't necessarily like contracts for the city manager. I thought we ought to evaluate the city manager annually. In the past, I think the city has gotten into some contracts and maybe been burned a little bit. And again, none of this is any reflection on Mr. Collins. I hope he's here, I hope he stays here, and Mr. Collins is doing an excellent job. But a lot can happen in three years. I would like to make it to where the position is not as political as what it may have been in the past. And I think doing a contract, I think that's one advantage of having a contract. This one happens to expire, if we did three years, it would happen to expire in an election year. Maybe that's not a good thing. Maybe we need to stagger it so that it doesn't expire in an election year, so that a new board can't come in and just say, hey, we hate the city manager, he's doing a really good job, but we don't like him, let's get rid of him. And they get three votes and he's gone. So maybe we need to look at making it where it terminates not in an election year. That may be something we need to look at. Those are my thoughts, and I'll, you know, be happy to hear others, obviously.
Yes.
Well, one thing to consider, as a general rule, a resignation penalty is not usually paid by the person. Usually, that's a new employer that would pay that. Usually, that's negotiated with the new employer, saying, hey, if I leave, I have this penalty, and I need you to pay that if you want to hire me. So it's typically not the employee that would pay that, as a general rule. One other thing, I think it would need to have some language that upon retirement, that penalty would not necessarily apply. So if the city manager, and again, I'm looking down the road, this will probably, if we approve this, this is going to be something we'll look at for the next city manager and for going on. But if a person retires, they don't necessarily need to pay this penalty as long as they give us a certain amount of notice, and that is an actual retirement, not a Urban Myers University of Florida retirement. So that's one item I'd like to see put in there. And I do kind of like the idea of it declining each year, to the simple fact of, if you know you're going to be leaving, it's better to tell us sooner. And quite frankly, if someone is saying, hey, I'm ready to go, sometimes it's best that that person move on and you don't keep them here. You know? I'm sure everyone's aware of, sometimes you go tell your employer, hey, I'm giving you two weeks' notice, and they say, no, that's okay, you can go ahead and leave now, that type of situation. Not that that would necessarily apply, but you never know what the situation may be. So those are some thoughts I have.
Commissioner, go ahead.
One more thing that I just thought of, and Mr. Potter, maybe you can help me work through this. Should, heaven forbid, something happened to Mr. Collins, maybe, or his wife, or something to that effect, to where there's a reason that he can no longer be here? He needs to take care of a sick wife, or he has an illness that he can no longer serve as, how does that work? Because obviously, he would, he would need to resign in that situation, but I would not want to penalize him twenty-five thousand for wanting to take care of, or needing to take care of.
Yeah, I actually thought about that this afternoon. I was thinking through it as I was driving down the road, and I was thinking, well, what about that contingency? I mean, we could add some language that, you know, any resignation penalty could be waived by the board. I mean, if, if I were in that situation and I was the city manager and I needed to quit and I knew I was going to have a penalty, I might just ask you to waive it. If you didn't waive it, I might just not quit. And then you could terminate them for cause, and they don't pay a penalty. See what I'm saying? I mean, they just, well, since you won't waive it, I'm sorry, it will not be working as much.
I'd rather have the contingency.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so. But that's a good point. That's why I wanted to float a draft with you tonight. I've been taking notes about the things you've said, so I think that we, you know, I think, look, again, too, this is not just whatever we want, it's what Mr. Collins wants as well. I think we probably need to hear from him if he's wanting to talk about it at all. And then he's going to probably want his own counsel to look at it, and his counsel may have want to negotiate it, I don't know. So.
He can talk about it after it's signed and we've voted on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Collins, would you like to add any to the conversation?
I mean, I mean, first of all, I very much appreciate the discussion, just having had it, and what's been said tonight is indicative of how the board feels, and I can tell you it's reciprocal. We, I very much enjoy being here, my family enjoys being here. We thought today, as odd as it is, we have someone in every school. I have someone in elementary school, preschool, middle school, and high school. So it's not that I'm not invested here, I'm as invested as I can be in four schools as anyone can be. I will also say that I think we've got a lot done in the last year. If you look at where we were when I got here, where we are today, and that's a team effort. That's not, I don't mean to say that's me, I mean, that's what everybody's done. With that, I, I am equally comfortable with the board, with the staff, and what we have available without a contract at all, if that's the privilege of the board. I would not want there to be a poisoning of a relationship or the perception by the public that there was a business decision in the form of a contract or some other thing that took precedent over doing the right thing day in and day out. I'm, I'm not typically one of those people who needs to have a contract or some other forcible thing to make the right decision, do the right thing. Not to say that we aren't going to make mistakes, because we are. I can assure you, if I'm here, we're going to do three things. We're going to work, we're going to make every effort to make sure the city sees the benefit from that, and we're going to make mistakes. I can assure you of those three. Having said that, I'm completely confident in the staff that we've put together, with the direction that the city's going, and the participants on this board. So with that, I'm comfortable either, either direction we went, contract or, or no contract. Again, I see protections for both sides, for all the reasons we've all discussed, and I'm, I'm certainly willing to proceed discussing all of those. But the overriding consideration for me must be that the community sees the benefit of it, and we see the results that we want to see. And those are my only comments moving forward, so.
I do think it's a bad practice to have a contract expiring with a new board. I think your first year as a commissioner is a learning experience, and to be able to come in and just fire somebody at will, just because you can, is kind of dangerous for a city, especially when you're on a track. I've gone back and forth of how I felt about contracts in the last six years, almost seven. I've been for it and against it, and then it pushed on me and all that. I've had it all happen. I see the value in having a contract, especially if it's a good contract for the city. I have set up here with contracts that weren't necessarily favorable for the city. And I was a citizen years ago where we've had to buy us, watch the board buy out a city manager, and, you know, and that's painful as a city to watch. So my feelings are a little bit, I think I would probably be a little bit more for it, but I just haven't, I can't get over the hangup of, you've said to us several times, you really didn't care. I mean, you didn't want a contract in the interview process, you know? It wasn't necessary for you to have a contract. So then the thought of giving a contract just because somebody thinks it's a great idea is still, it kind of struggles. But the logic, you know, I still struggle with it, but the logical side says, listen, if there's fear that for some reason, if we don't have a contract, that Mr. Collins is going to walk, and this is a protective mechanism of, you know, we want to keep him, you know, I can get behind that. I mean, I know Mr. Collins has a lot of work that he wants to be done, and I'd hate for a new board to come in and just, for whatever reason, decide we want him gone. But it could happen anyway. But, so I, just speaking out loud my thoughts, I think as we go forward, I would really like to see it be like a two-year contract, maybe with a provision for another year. it be like a two-year contract, maybe with a provision for another year. It just gives some kind of stability, or if it's two years with another two. But I just, I hate for it to be coming up with a new election. So how are, we need to stagger that to make it work. And then I'd like your input, Mr. Collins. So how long? How long do you want? I mean, what's a desirable timeframe for you?
About nine years and eight months.
Retirement.
No, actually, I mean, nine years and nine months. No, kidding. I plan on working that long regardless of whether I retire or not. I, I plan on, on doing that. So I kid when I say nine years and not specific just to retirement, but.
Too many kids in spirit.
I do. I have too many college educations to pay for. And they're approaching quickly. So from all I've read, we're typically three. But I'm not, I'm not stuck on three. That's just where we were is the practice of it. So I'm amenable to those discussions, be it two, three, four, one, whatever the number is, if there's some recurring revision. It just depends on the language in the contract.
Is there, I mean, I don't know where y'all are wanting to go with this tonight. Obviously, you would have to take some of these comments and redraw. I know we're gonna start in September, the work sessions before. Is there any way we can just, I hate to keep sending you back and forth unless you just want to, Mr. Potter. You know, is there, do y'all feel like we need still just to sit around the table and say, this is what we want and we don't want?
I think it would be easiest, my suggestion would be to take some of your comments. They're, they're good comments and they're not really that contradictory. And, and just create another draft and circulate it. Feel free to respond to me directly without responding to the full board with your thoughts about it. If, if you don't like something or you need something explained, and we'll, I'll try to get another draft completed.
And would it be ready by the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we in a hurry as a board, though? I mean, I don't know that there's a timeframe. Is there?
I, I think that the quicker we get it done, there'll be one more thing we can check off the list we've done. And we're not having to have more meetings using time to discuss that when we can be discussing other stuff.
Okay. Do we need to defer this? Or, okay, could I?
You would just need to defer it to a later meeting.
For the next meeting?
That'd be fine.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we defer this to the next meeting.
Second.
Got it first with Commissioner Lucas and a second with Commissioner Rainey. Ms. Johnson, would you like to do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye. Okay, that will bring us to item 13, city managers items for discussion.
Mayor, members of the commission, three items for you tonight. First, I sent an email earlier today. We had a, a list of questions that Ms. Stevens from The Observer sent regarding just some general progress of the budget and the other things. She emailed that to me. When I emailed back to her the response, I copied each of you on that. I assume there'd be some story that comes out. I wanted just to make sure you got that email and had that information before the story comes out, in case there were any questions. It was mostly positive, but I want to make sure that you were able to answer any questions or at least know where, where we were. Just a general status of some budgetary items and planning. But if you would, just check your email and know that you have that. And I'm sure that that will be written the next day or so. And again, positive, positive responses. Second, as Ms. Brooks mentioned, and thank her for, for noticing, we do, we have gotten some positive feedback and comments on the traffic. For the first morning, we were doing a lot of finger crossing as we sat out there. It was really busy. But everything I've gotten back, and I'm sure there are some negatives, but I have not gotten them. But I would like to thank each of you. Obviously, you guys kind of went out on a, on a limb there. That's a big change for the city and you supported that. And I certainly appreciate that. And we also want to thank the school, their members, their employees, principals, vice principals, and the maintenance staff. The school's maintenance staff worked with us very closely on the changes we made within, within the interior of the school campus, middle school and high school. We want to make sure they, they are thanked in the process because they certainly helped out. And last but not least, our police department. The traffic issue was a big deal. If you noticed, we had our day shift patrol officers out there mornings and afternoons. They certainly stepped up and did a great job in what could have been a very difficult circumstance, given that we didn't really know what we were doing. But they really stepped up and done a good job on that. And we appreciate that. And the sheriff's department. While we were working on this, the sheriff's department volunteered to have their staff work traffic at Westwood Elementary School while we worked the others. And we certainly do appreciate them on that. That, that was a big relief for us. And lastly, I believe two meetings ago, the board approved $22,500 to go toward the middle school for some specific improvements. A mower, $9,500, and $13,000 for some improvements to the baseball field and the soccer field. That check has been delivered. They've expressed their appreciation for that. I met last week, mayor did as well, with the owners and representatives from Old South Realty, the, the company who's done some local developments, including Cumberland Estates. They voluntarily, on their own, without noticing anyone, matched that donation and wrote the school a check for an additional $22,500 to, to help with some of the needs that they have there. And we certainly did not know that that was going to take place. As a matter of fact, we kind of had to pull the information out of them. They mentioned in passing, not thinking that we would hear. So just a quick thank you to them. We, we want them to be partners in the community. And they certainly stepped up i- in that. Other than a reminder of the executive session, that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions that I've been asked. Obviously, my location has changed for my full-time job. And I've had some questions. I know you sent us an email on the guard rail. Is there a timeframe? Because believe it or not, I'm getting a lot, just because that, the playground right there with no fence is where the kindergarten pre-k, which are about to start, play. So I know that some of it's out of the city's control and it's the county. But is, do you have any idea of, of timeframe?
I, I do. We met on site last week, actually the week before last. There was a redesign of that guard rail, as you, as you may recall. The guard rail itself was very close to the road. We had some issues. We moved the fence, or we, the county schools actually moved the fence back about four feet. The redesign and installation of the guard rail's gonna take about eight weeks. We got that information. I emailed already this week the maintenance staff and supervisors at Williamson County Schools and told them that it was their privilege as to whether or not they reinstall the fence at the new location. We can work if they install it. We can work if they leave the temporary. So we're fine. We noticed them of the, of the eight-week timeline and left it up to them as to whether or not they wanted to install that. So I sent that email to them on Monday and we'll see. But roughly, rough installation's eight weeks for the guard rail fencing, clearly at this point, the pleasure of the Williamson County Schools.
Okay. And then the other question is the flashing light time zone. And I think you may have even mentioned that. There is, it's still going off at the old times. Is there something, who's responsible for the flashing lights and setting the time?
The state would be responsible for that. We, we have two issues with that. It's not just the issue of the flashing light, but it's also an issue of the signage. The signs for the elementary schools list the school zone as 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the afternoons. Mornings are not an issue at 7 until 9, I believe. Two to four in the afternoon is a bit of an issue simply because schools, the elementary schools are released later in the day and they're releasing traffic after four o'clock. I've already sent something to the state to see if we can get permission to change those times. We will likely do that from 2:15 to 4:15 or 2:15 to 4:30. That will be the best way to ensure that we have that traffic there. And that's simply to enforce the speed limit. It's a state roadway. It's annexed into the city, but the city cannot mandate the speed limits during those times. So if the state will agree to allow us to change the times, then that will in effect change the speed limit during those times. And as soon as I can get that information back, we'll make the proper adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Potter?
Mayor, I usually don't have anything to say, but I've been here a little over 100 days. And I just wanted to say this for the record, and that is that, you know, our law firm has the privilege of working with a number of governmental entities. And just from what I've observed about Fairview, I'm not sure what things were like a year or two, five years ago, or even longer. But from what I've observed, you're very organized. The people who serve the city of Fairview are very conscientious and work very hard. And so there's a lot of good things going for this, for this town.
Okay, thank you. Okay, communications from the commissioners. And I'll go ahead and I'll change it up and go with Commissioner Burks.
I want to say congratulations to all the students getting the pleasure of going back to school. I know they're so excited about it. I believe our kindergarten starts next week?
Like half-day tomorrow. And then, yeah, Monday they start.
And I know it's actually a pretty big deal for kindergartners. I had two children went through it. And we're actually very excited. So I will say congratulations to the incoming kindergartners. And congratulations to all of our new seniors who are starting their last year before they have to make some hard decisions and become adults. So enjoy it. Have fun. And everyone come out to the football game Friday if you can.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Nothing to nightmare. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rainey?
Nothing to nightmare, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, just say thank you to all the, publicly say thank you to all the city staff. You know, I don't think we thank them enough. But they do a lot of stuff that I think most of us kind of get to take for granted or don't realize. And there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. And so I just wanted to publicly thank all of them. I'm not gonna go through and name them all. We'd be here all night. But, but it doesn't go unnoticed by us and we appreciate it. The traffic at the schools, I've heard nothing but, but positive things from it. I've been out there. My wife's been out there. Big difference. Matter of fact, I've seen people that were complaining about it before it ever even went into effect that said, wait, now that we've done it, it's a little bit different. So we changed some minds on that, which is a good thing. And then, like Commissioner Burke says, come out Friday night to the Battle at 8:40. I'll be the guy probably in the corner in a barbecue-induced and coma. So you can just come by and visit me. But it's fun. If you've never been to one, you need to go. It's the place to be, for sure. That's all I have, the nightmare.
Okay, thank you. I also want to say congratulations to city staff and the school principals for coming together and seeing a need to solve a problem and, you know, seeing it through. I've heard nothing but positive things. You know, of course, there is a, a few people with the hiccups that live on the road that may not have kids and might think it's an inconvenience. But, you know, you, you know, there's always gonna be that few people that it's not gonna work for. But I think for the majority of the community, especially families that have students and are having to do those drop-offs, and I bet you in some way, the people that live in Hickman County and Centerville, they might appreciate it too. So good job on that. You know, anytime we can come up with a temporary solution, which we all realize that there's a much-needed problem at Cumberland. And, you know, eventually, as we move forward this year, I think Mr. Collins will definitely probably give us some answers of different routes we can go for the widening and the light. And I look forward to that. But congratulations on a great job and all the staff. And I know it took, to recondition people takes a moment. So I think y'all did an excellent job. And we will now go ahead and move on to item 15 and go into executive session. Returning at 9:30 or 9:29. And we're on item 16. And that would be a motion to adjourn. There's no decisions that would be made.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Woo, we were eager. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.